I now call to order the City of Cottonwood Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting, Monday, July 18, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Stevens?
Here.
Commissioner Pelz?
Here.
Commissioner Glasscock?
Here.
Commissioner Kling? Chairwoman Maston?
Present. First order of business is to approve the minutes from our last meeting on June 27, 2022. Do any of the commissioners have any changes, corrections, or additions?
No.
All right. I will entertain a motion.
Second.
Move to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Unanimously carried. Our next order of business are informational reports and updates. Mr. Director?
Thank you. Update on two items. The CF rezone that came to the commission regarding publicly owned properties, the school districts, some city properties, county properties. It's going to council tomorrow night for a first reading as well. That you all recommended to council as well. So those will be on their agenda tomorrow night for the first reading. And that is all I have right now.
Very good. All right. Next order. Commission on an item that's not on our agenda. All right. I don't see anybody coming forward. So I am going to go ahead and move on. We don't have any old business this evening, so we will now move on to new business. Our first item is DR 22-008. Bungalows on Main.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Gary Davis. Four. An apartment complex located on the south side of Main Street as it approaches Old Town area. It's between about Fifth Street and just past Eighth Street. It's located, property is located within the yellow shape here. This shows it being located within the Arts, Culture, and Entertainment District, which the significance of that is that it gives the director of the department the ability to make change. Portions of the zoning ordinance, including setbacks and landscaping. And we'll get to those in a minute. Project details, property is zone CR, which is commercial residential. Proposed is 48 apartments in the configuration of 24 separate duplex buildings. 12 units would be one bedroom, 36 would be two bedroom. 105 parking spaces are provided, and that includes. Buildings. And that exceeds the required spaces of 89. It does need a reduction of the front building setback in this configuration and in landscaping, and I'll go over that pictorially in a minute. And the project would need to work with staff on a landscaping plan that meets the intent of the ordinance but avoids utility issues. So that would. Issuance of building permits. It's something that we can do as staff to have them adhere to the zoning ordinance, landscape requirements as much as possible within the setbacks that are provided. Project, as I said, is on the south side of Main Street. The proposal or the property is split by topography. The northwest portion of the property is. Proposed development would go. The southeastern portion of the property is very hilly and rocky. And there is, right now, an existing social trail going from the north end of Seventh Street to Main Street down the hill, just east of the Seventh Street alignment. As you recall, we just approved a project design review for some 20 units up here. That was the overlook at Cottonwood. And the existing Mountain View Apartments is over here. So that kind of gives you an idea where we're at. The proposal from the developer is to is to take the eastern portion and separate that out later as a separate lot that could be developed as a separate project. And, but even with the separation of that property east of the trail, the proposed 48 units does still meet the density requirements that are allowed in this particular zone. We're also proposing, in addition to the trail easement following the existing social trail, proposing a an easement for the natural area, for this hilly area, to the south of the parking spaces and the garages to protect that hillside. In your packet, we supplied the applicant's site plan, as well as the floor plans and some elevations. The units along the front facing Main Street would have some additional design elements attached to them that kind of echo the bungalow feel from the historic era along Main Street. This is the site plan, and it shows the bungalow units. Some smaller duplex units being one bedroom each, some being two bedroom each. The ones along Main Street will front directly onto the sidewalk. There will be cuts in the existing stone wall that's there, which would remain most. And the garage units are shown here. So there are four garage buildings, which would be included in the parking configuration. Again, this is all below the hill. The project would have two driveways, one just west of Sixth Street and one lining up with Seventh Street. There was a comment from Public Works to ask if they could line it up with Sixth Street, but site configurations and utilities made that a problem. So Public Works does not object to this particular. That end street. There are very few trips per day coming out of there, so they don't believe there would be enough of a conflict to worry about there. Yellow line shows the existing sidewalk. The Public Works Department has commented that the project would be responsible for updating curb gutter and sidewalk along there. And this particular site plan. Between the sidewalk and the curb along Main Street. Normally, that's a great idea. However, in this particular case, as you can see here, this is a picture of it, there are all manner of utilities within that area. Underground, overhead, water. We anticipate that it would be very, very difficult to put those trees in that location and which would have met the requirement. 25 feet or so along there. So we've proposed stipulation number four, as I said, that would require them to work. Community development, but Public Works staff, utility staff, to make sure that whatever landscaping goes in the front doesn't conflict with utilities and that we get as much greenery on. The one tree per 25 feet. And the newer rendering is showing smaller landscape. Is conflicting with the utilities. Also showing some smaller landscaping back here. I think back here, we would ask the developer to put in a little more greenery. Tree, upper, larger shrub, smaller tree. Those that the setbacks. That's required in the CR zone. And proposed is 11 feet to the building and then to the overhang here would be about five feet. Willing to work with that and grant that request because this design. For the street, it provides. Communication with the street, interacting with Main. Say your typical apartment complex, which may just have a parking lot in. Back on the street. It might have the side of the. Onto the street. Finding a very walkable street. It would, if there was a parking lot there, that would be a. Things closer to the street where you see buildings. Down and also perhaps. Of commercial CR and C1 zone. Help make that a walkable corridor. To the typical suburban design that's in. I believe all units would have a. A shared or individual. Of Main Street here. Again, we see the. So as to not conflict with the. More greenery along this location. Out here. And as I said, there would be some. Going down to the ground. That same location today. Rock wall here ends just past. The utility conflicts that would be there. Wall. Okay. Complex that we had. Going farther east. This is from. Section, looking up the hill. This is where that trail. To Seventh Street. This is what it looks like from the north end of Seventh Street, looking north. If we are able to get a. Able to improve that trail, which would be. But right now, we can't touch it. So with. We can make that connection from the top of the hill up by the post office. Former hog wild built. You see some older bungalow style. Farther west, there's a. And farther. Proposed stipulations, as I mentioned, most of these are fairly. Is that the applicant shall coordinate with community development, Public Works, and utilities to make sure that landscaping doesn't conflict with the utilities and that it also is in accordance with our Section 407 landscaping to the greatest extent possible and still avoid conflicts. And a landscaping plan would be submitted and approved by the city prior to the issuance of the building permits. Any future signs? We need separate permits, dressing in street names, go through fire. And number seven is requiring the dedication of the public trail easement and the natural open space easement for the undeveloped portions of the site that are west of that trail easement. It wouldn't affect that extra lot that they're proposing to split off. It would just be for that green portion on that slide I showed you. And then certificate of compliance would have to be issued within 24 months. So project has to happen within two years for this design review to still be in effect. So that's our review of the project. I've got this site plan here for reference. We do have a representative of the applicant here to answer questions specifically on what they're proposing. But unless you have questions that are staff related, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Do any of the commissioners have questions for staff? Yes.
The bus stop that you pointed to a little bit ago, is that going to stay where it is? Or is it going to move to the little further west?
That will stay where it is because I believe it is just west of the property. So this property would not affect that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Let me double check that. Yeah, see, the rock wall ends here.
And that's the ditch.
That's the end of the property.
And what's the deal with the rock wall? Are they keep, you said they were going to potentially take some of it out?
Keep as much of it as possible. There would be some cuts in it for individual walkways to units. And the one end of it would need to be taken out for that driveway that is offset from Sixth Street. But a large portion of that is supposed to remain.
Thank you.
Any further questions for staff? All right. I think we can move on to the applicant. Who's here on behalf of the applicant? Please come forward and introduce yourself into the microphone for the record.
Hi there. My name is Eric Anderson and, thank you, Mr. Davis, and thank you, counsel. So I am the construction arm of the development team and be happy to address any questions you might have.
Very good. Do any of the commissioners have any questions for the applicant?
That's kind of a, the number of units you have there, I only see two places for trash. Is that going to be significant enough to handle that large of a building?
We believe so, but as we go through the design process, we can double check on that with the rest of the team.
Any further questions?
What about the fire entrance and exit for emergency vehicles? Because it's really condensed. And then the other thing I'm just concerned about is that frontage on Main Street. The setback there. It's really in your face from taking it from what it is to like right in your face. So would there be a possibility of continuing that rock wall all the way through?
In regards to the fire access, our civil engineer is working on making sure that we comply with that. So I don't believe that'll be an issue. And in regards to the block wall, the question came up a little earlier on whether we, you know, on the cuts that we would, what we plan to do with the block wall. And we plan to dismantle the sections of the block wall that we have to remove and hopefully incorporate that further down. And returns of the block wall. Along Main Street, our units do have rock, river rock incorporated into the courtyards as well. So there will be a lot of that reincorporated back into the project.
Thank you.
I think, one, this is awesome. We need more affordable workforce housing in the area. I don't know if this is a question for staff or for you, but my concern would be traffic coming to and from Old Town and possibly making a left turn into the apartment complex and how that would back up. Because it gets pretty backed up. We see when there's Thunder Valley Rally, Halloween, and some of the bigger events and what that would look like if it was on a daily basis.
That might be something that we will have to discuss further with.
I don't know what to do if you're not going to ask a question.
So I can have another one and maybe you're going to answer it already because I was going to tag on to her.
Right. As you see in this picture, there is a center left turn lane there. So, well.
I'm not sure there is. No.
Nope. No, it's a two lane.
Yeah.
And that was my question is, you know, this section of Main is scheduled to be repaved at some point in the future. And, you know, over here on this far left side of the Main Street, we have the fiber optic run, which is really nasty driving surface. Is, when that gets done, is there thoughts to take and move those bike lanes over and create a center lane up through there? I know it's tight, but I think, you know, my fellow commissioner has a really good, you know, left hand learning, left hand turns on Main Street anymore, especially in Old Town are becoming increasingly difficult. And you can't hardly ever get out of Willard, let alone turn left off of Main Street, which is just going to take and shut down all the, you know, westbound traffic. So I was just wondering if there wasn't an opportunity in the future when that gets repaved to look at how that road is going to be affected by the additional traffic?
That, Madam Chair and Vice Chairman Garrison, that is something that can be looked at as they design that particular stretch in there prior to the reconstruction. I don't, couldn't tell you offhand if there's sufficient width to get a third turn lane in there. As you see farther east by the, even if you narrowed the bike lanes a little bit, this bike lane is pretty wide because this curb, this gutter happens to be very, very wide. So we needed to keep four feet outside of that gutter for the bike lane. But it's something that can look into, but I don't know what the outcome of that's going to be.
I imagine that's something that we would have to talk to other members of staff since it's roadwork and it's not something that we can't leave to a developer. Yes?
Sure. So, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chairman. So the next meeting, the first meeting in August, Main Street Design Award is going out. So we're going to begin that process very soon. And I know that bike lanes are priority, but I think this timing of this project is perfect. And I'll make sure Community Development, Scott over there, make sure that our design team is aware of this. Because I agree, left turn lanes can be difficult in Old Town. So we'll just make sure Scott touches base with David and team. But this is perfect timing to address that.
Thank you. All right. I don't think there are any further questions from the commissioners for the applicant. Thank you very much. I don't have any further questions for you at this time.
Okay, I do actually have the paint drawdowns.
Absolutely.
Color samples.
Yes, we'd love to see them.
A few different sets if you'd like me to.
Usually when we get those, they're on a much larger board, so I just didn't think you had them. You have to share. Commissioner Kling, I apologize, I forgot you were on the line. Do you have any questions for the applicant?
No, thank you though. It's a little muck over mine, that's my fault for not being there in person. But, um, no questions.
We.
I'll push it forward, thank you.
You're welcome. How does it look? Fine?
You're saying it's a reflective white paint? If you're going to be right on the, right on the road with the headlights of the cars, is that gonna?
The white is just a trim color and the tone of the paint can be adjusted. So this is our first round of kind of our intent of make it a little brighter. So yes, yes, we can look at that.
You know what? I do have a question, and it has to do with the landscaping. I know that this is in process and that staff indicated that we would, you know, talk about doing something sort of in between what you had because you had the trees and then you did new renderings with the little guys. And I do think that one of the things that will help the setback, and clearly you guys are aware of this, is having more plant life along the road. It'll help create a little bit of a visual buffer between the lack of setback and the fronts of all those homes, which are right on Main Street. Do you have any idea about what you're planning to do there? Is that totally up in the air still?
We are working on that, but yes, the intent would be to not go from big trees down to small.
Yes.
It'd be something in between.
Okay.
Maybe something with trees that have a shorter canopy height. So we don't, you know, deal with the overhead power lines. But that'll have to be reviewed. But yes, we, our intent would be to have nice greenery around each one of the housing.
I've got one more question. It may be more for staff than you, but it goes back to the chairwoman's comments about landscaping. Is that eastern edge of this lot has a pretty significant ditch? And the flow, the runoff that uses that ditch, when we get our monsoon range, you'll be seeing here pretty soon, probably this week. It seems like we're missing a really good opportunity to take and fix that problem. That's been a problem for a long time because it comes shooting out there and it brings a lot of dirt and debris with it. And then it has to travel all the way down to Seventh Street before it's picked back up again and taken off of Main Street. And it, you know, brings boulders and dirt and debris and branches and trees. And it pretty much shuts down that section. And here we are redoing that entire property and the landscaping associated with it. And we're not really even recognizing that there's an issue there. Is there any way that that can be taken into consideration when you work through the landscaping plan?
The Public Works Department has been reviewing the plans as they come through code review. And they'll be reviewing any grading and drainage plans as well. I believe there is a proposal for underground retention as well as just to the east of this, off of this map, there's a detention basin over here as well. So if water cannot be completely detained in here from the site, then there could be underground as well.
No, and I think you misunderstand what I'm saying. The water I'm talking about starts up at Willard.
Back here.
And it comes all the way across the school property, across the hospital property, comes down into that canyon that's in the back there behind the Catholic Social Services. And then it comes shooting down that property line and out through that gate that's at the very end of the rock wall. But it's significant. It's not a little bit of drainage. It's significant. And by the way, I'm going to really miss the vultures, the turkey vultures that hang out in those trees. That's been a Cottonwood staple my entire life, so they're going to go away, which is sad, so.
I was going to say, you might, if you along that edge, put in a few more trees, especially around the back, they could function a little bit as a catch. I doubt it would make, it would just be a mitigating factor. It wouldn't catch all that water. make, it would just be a mitigating factor. It wouldn't catch all that water. I haven't really personally noticed that so much. I've been really fortunate, I think. But I do know that anytime that you get a little more vegetation in a hillside, that, that vegetation helps that hillside to stay where it is. So you guys might want to add some more trees in that back corner. Also, that will protect your units.
Well, now the applicant's aware of that situation can work with Public Works to make sure that that's taken care of one way or the other.
Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, there is a drainage report that is required to be submitted as well. I know, Mr. Vice Chair, you said it does come off of other properties, but when it gets to this one, they will have to show that drainage report to satisfy the engineering requirements.
Thank you, Mr. Director.
I have one more question. Can I ask quick?
Go ahead.
What's going to happen with the natural spring that's in the back of that property? What is your plan for that?
Currently, no, we're not, we're not doing anything with, we're not disturbing that. So it's currently outside our, our construction boundary.
Nice. That's a good answer. In just a moment, we'll have an opportunity for public comment. All right. If the commissioners do not have any further questions for the applicant, I'm going to let you go ahead and sit down. Thank you so much. So now, do we have anyone present from the public who would like to speak on behalf or against this project? If you do, please fill out one of the little forms in the back on that little table there and bring it up here. And then now is the time. Sir, did you want to speak?
Well, I just wanted to say that there's a, where the National Service was building this, where that was asked compared to this. That should just be down according to this.
Can you please speak into the mic, introduce yourself for the record?
I own the Larry's Antique Building.
Okay.
Which used to be cottonwood.
All right.
There's a spring behind that building.
Mm-hmm.
And I just didn't know if they knew that. That's where almost all that water comes from that goes down there is from that spring.
Okay.
And there's water in there continually.
Yes.
Just a little lake.
Oh, okay. Well, thank.
I didn't know anybody knew that was there.
Thank you very much. Yeah. Is there anyone else from the public who has any comments or questions? All right. I'm going to go ahead and close the floor to the public. And now is the time for the commissioners to go ahead and give their opinions on the project. We will go ahead and start, we'll start on that side.
Thank you. I think this is exciting and great again because we have the housing shortage in the area and we also need a lot of workforce housing. So this should be great to bring in people and help the people who are already here.
I agree. And I like the fact that it's more of a family rental, not a, like apartment type of situation that they actually have yards and whatnot. I think it gives more opportunity added. I'm assuming it'll be more affordable than purchasing a home. So I, I like it.
Where's the yard?
They're the, they're the little fenced backyards. Commissioner Kling?
Hi, thank you. So this is such a beautiful property on the edge of our Old Town. I, as you know, am very unfavorable to new residential projects, even mixed use right here. I can really appreciate the time that went into this and to set as many units on that lot as possible. Something about the layout, so, you know, I don't want to offend anybody. It's easier for me to say, you know, this side of the phone. But something about the pictures, about the visuals, I'm really excited to see the rendering. But there's something about it that brings track home to me that I'm not thrilled with. I think there's a way to work around that, but it doesn't, to me, have a charm that it's cohesive with the rest of Old Town. That doesn't mean that it, it couldn't flourish, that there's a potential here. It just visually we didn't do it. But that doesn't mean that it don't have the potential.
Thank you very much.
That's all I would conclude.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Pelts?
I like the idea of having affordable housing in the area. My biggest concern with this is the visual going into Old Town and how condensed all of these units are. I think it takes away from the charm of that downtown area. And that's my biggest concern, is the landscaping and the, really, through that area going into downtown. And my concern is the same as the other commissioners with the traffic. Because of the traffic issues that we have down there, I'm really worried about the one of putting a roundabout in there, the left-hand turn, safety for kids, community. I, those are my concerns with that. It's just the visual effect.
Vice Chair?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm going to mirror. And I want to ask a question of staff. There's nowhere in this that it says this is affordable housing, right?
Correct. There's no provision for quote-unquote affordable housing by the measure.
Affordable housing, okay. I just want to make sure we had that. This, this piece of property has been sitting, was tore down, the old Stranahan House, which was, I would have loved to seen something more consistent with that. That, that old brick style. I know they, of Old Town, but I, because there's, a way to hide that. And with the lack of trees going in through there because of the easement issue, a, a landscape, this is just one long tract of, I can tell you, I wouldn't be happy if I, if, if I could jump from my porch to the sidewalk and then onto, but I do like that it, area. We have the old turn, some galleries. We have the bike shop right there further to the east. Open up some more opportunities along with, you know, the property that, push the walking traffic further to the east than it, than it does now because it kind of stops around Willard. And it's, will be offset by the ability to walk, type of a feel landscaping establishes itself. So, you know, it, but I think this one has a chance of actually provide, you the housing. So.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Opinions have already been spoken by my commissioners. However, I'd like to add, just to build, interesting and exciting elements of this project is its, how it increases the walkability, to reiterate what Chair, or Vice Chair Garrison just said. And I also think, invigorate some of the businesses that we have on Main Street. And as we get more businesses on Main Street, we'll find more people walking, more people, that little park, we'll see more people hanging out in it. And all of this is a real positive for our downtown area. It's a positive for people. Town is small, we're here. There's limited space to add new businesses. So this is an opportunity to increase the, ultimately, the city's plan is to continue increasing that viability. It's a really good part of that. I do believe that there are, is room for improvement, especially with the landscape. This. And I think that they could be given the opportunity to work with staff to improve better aesthetic presentation. Have something that's really idyllic, like when you're driving down, homes. It's very classic. And I, is strange. There are a lot of areas where this is, right on the street. There is historic, very quaint and something where people would want to live. So those I believe we're ready to entertain a motion.
Eight for a 48-unit residential development subject. The following stipulations with the development plans as submitted to the Planning, Zoning Commission at the July 18 Board comments dated May 26, 2022, and any additional code review board comment, visions of zoning ordinance, Section 408, outdoor lighting requirement, development, Public Works and Utilities Departments to ensure that landscaping is, with zoning ordinance Section 407E, conflicts with existing infrastructure along approved, separate permit, six, all addressing, addressing and street names shall be coordinated and approved by Cottonwood Fire and Medical Department and shall meet all requirements. Seven, the applicant shall dedicate a public trail easement for the, freed alignment and shall dedicate the west side, or site west of the trail easement. Number eight, the, issued within 24 months of the Planning Commission action. And I hear.
Second. All right. Roll call vote, please. Pelts?
Yes.
Commissioner?
No.
Chairwoman Mastin? Changes to the landscaping as requested. Order of business is done and we are moving on to ZO22-005. The always. Because they had to make revisions and then they'll take it to council. Although truly, I.
Madam Chair, Commission, we've been asked, chances in the front yard setback. Right now, that's not allowed. You can have up to a four-foot, it's a change that we recently made, brought to the Commission, City Council. Tall fence, it's got to be with, within whatever that front setback is. Could be short as 10 feet, or 50 in others. So we're asking you tonight if you would like to, couple examples of what it could look like. We, we are asking if you would like to make a recommendation. Requires conditional use permit or require, this is an example of, with the four feet of it being solid, see-through. What could potentially happen, especially if it is recommended at the staff level? We don't, right now, slatted fence like that would be allowed outside of that front yard setback. There are, a lot of times you'll see it in commercial industrials. Remember last month, this was another example of what it could look like as well. This is those, departments there that was required to come back, project. So there's a lot of different ways this can go. Bring that to this commission to make recommendation to council. One of three options to approve this, or if it's a recommendation for denial, if the commission doesn't desire to. And that's all I have on that.
Do any of the commissioners have questions for staff?
So you said you do not have a choice of what?
It becomes very limited on what we can do at the staff level for that. There's so many different materials. A handful of materials that could be used. It gets very hard to regulate something like that, especially with all the changes over the years on, on different materials that work.
Any further questions?
Can you explain to me the legalities, I guess, of the difference between a conditional use permit and a design review approval?
A conditional use permit does put conditions on that approval. I know design review, you can't be revoked like a conditional use permit can if there's a hazard created because of that, or they're not following what those stipulations are. It also gives the neighbors a chance to weigh in because that is where we will notify everybody within, publish a legal notice in the newspaper, post signs on the property. So it gets more exposure and gives those residents or property owners within 300 feet a chance to voice their, does not get advertised like that. It is still a public meeting. Anybody can show up and speak on it, but they don't get notified the same way.
Thank you.
Yeah, no questions on this. If any of the commissioners have opinions on the proposal, if you guys want to talk through the potential choices that, your fellow commission members to vote your way. Please go ahead. We always start with the newest person.
I'm like, but I need to hear everybody's opinions first to figure out my own, especially with this one. Um, how I feel depending on if the city doesn't have much say and it ends up being an ice or.
I agree because it doesn't help the quality of the location.
Side, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Kling?
My biggest concern is the aesthetics. The chain link fence that you've shown is an, just, nothing like I would want to look at my neighborhood. I mean, I just wouldn't. I would think that on that six foot, just like it is, be some type of a review or restriction that says if you're going to close this in, these are the materials, no other option than that. And I think that No other option than that. And I think that that and having chain link fences going across everybody's property with the charm of the city. I understand wanting to have that fence across the front.
Vice Chair?
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Madam The same comments I had the last time we talked about this. I am no like approving any type of six foot structure in front of a fence in front of a property. And then besides the public safety issues that it would cause for that property as well. So fortunately is because like, and so they allow somebody to sneak in on a weekend and put something like this up. Claiming about it either, but the what, what I do appreciate about at least two of these recommend process and would allow the neighbors to come it to look like should they choose to use that. I know which one I'm going to go with. If I had my druthers, I wouldn't, we'd be And so I will be making the motion for number one.
Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, there is a recommendation to on wood. They actually So this is not within the city limits here.
But, but we do have a and this and, and it's, it's not new. It's just not as widespread as, as our neighbor to the Don't necessarily go along with the denial. Lot of questions that you guys continue to get about this. And I think not doing nothing. So I think going with a conditional process or conditional use process at least makes and on it and maybe makes them step up more fitting with, with what their neighbors are going to have to endure when they leave. So.
So for myself, the fact that I tend to be extremely self determinist in regard to a able to build up their property the way that they see fit, as long as it's not a danger or an ISO. Obviously, as the other commissioners have pointed out, a six foot fence could become an ISO, but so could a three foot in my own neighborhood. It's of embracing neighborhood quality. And I think that there's a pretty good path to that. My personal, having listened to my fellow commissioners, my personal instinct is probably number CUP process is a little bit more rigorous. And I think that the average homeowner will be I like to make things a little bit easier for homeowners. Commissioners are more comfortable with option number one. You know, that I think that that's Council versus a denial or a move with absolutely And last chance for opinions since we've kind of talked around.
Madam Chair, I'd like to mention to you that again, these are if you have your own that you would like to recommend to council as well, you can do that.
Honestly, I really give And as one of the other commissioners asked earlier, trying to regulate design because 10 years down the road, there's new materials that are now being sold at Home Depot and Lowe's. So I do understand, like my first instinct was just to say, well, let's make them wood, but that's not really of what you all have put forward. We have some good options. So with that said, if Oh, I apologize, public. Is anyone here from the public interested in speaking on the fence height issue? If so, please fill out the form in the back and come to the mic and introduce yourself. Nope. All right. Into a motion.
Taken into consideration oh, commissioners and Madam Chair, I move to recommend approval to the city council, the proposed amendment to section 404J requiring conditional use permit approval by the planning Second.
Roll call vote please.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Peltz? Commissioner Kling?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Garrison?
Yes.
Chairwoman Mastin.
Yes. All right. All in favor? Passed. That'll go to council. And then I believe the final item on the agenda is just going over some questions that we
Chair Jeff Tripp, our airport manager is here this evening at the request of last month's meeting to answer some of those
Like to do this. Would you like to start asking me questions? Would you like to kind of go into the topics that the airport is typically presented to the
This was something that the vice chair requested, and he always has lots questions if you don't mind.
Yeah, I would love to have you kind of give us since you've come on board, there's been quite a bit more participation from the airport and the projects that have been and stipulations that are, that are part of these discussions. And that's what background into kind of where all this comes from. Why, why airport the properties that surround it and are within its flight path because basically all of Cottonwood is within the flight path of
Sure. Well, let me go back to 2018. Action plan to address the increasing number of complaints. We started to see a big uptick in flight training activities coming from Prescott Airport through Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University. And that has continued over, over the last year between Embry-Riddle and all the other flight schools they have there was the 21st busiest and they're sending about 80% of their aircraft are flying in the Prescott area. And then they have five regional airports, Cottonwood, Williams, Seligman, Wickenburg. sent out. So I think these in 2018, the city started working on noise advancement, action items to try to help mitigate some of the and unincorporated county were complaining about the aircraft operations. At that time, the back in, it was law requiring residences within the vicinity of the airport to before here, this is the Arizona revised statute that actually put in the territory in the vicinity of the public use airport. And this one is saying that the on the state real estate office and that is also now the particular traffic pattern airspace for a particular airport. Since 2006, which is about on the airport webpage. That counties with a population of 500 and carry noise levels be to 65 decibels from levels. So those are the kind of providing as part of our code review board comments for anything. So you can see on page three in black and white, not as much detail. We are in the process on page four, we're up to include identifying where the hospital operations, particularly in the middle of the night. Then it's showing just a little bit more info for the airport based upon the operations. The 75, 70, and then down to the 65. Snapshot to help attachment A.
I'm showing my ignorance of aviation here, but this airport traffic pattern. They're noticeable to people on the ground because I don't know, it's actually
off, circling around, come back and landing. So this is saying this is where aircraft generally are. It is not a hard festual saying, for example, on 51st Street and I'm on 52nd Street, the planes never fly over my house. So again, we see a lot more traffic going to entering and exiting the traffic pattern. And the traffic pattern itself of aircraft operating. If there's a, one of our only flight school has a two seat light sport aircraft. It doesn't need that much space. For more distance to climb and out to right out because they have to have so much distance between planes. Say they have to about maybe 2,000 feet between air four or five planes, six planes, which can happen often during This is really just a map showing here's the general pattern for the airport based upon the time history. You know, to kind of show that this is the general, general patterns that we'll see.
You allow in there because I live right by there. Those little planes don't bother me, but once in a while it sounds like someone's got a private jet coming in there.
Aviation airport. So basically that means we can handle any type of aircraft except for commercial airlines and larger military jets. Typically for an airport like us, we're usually seeing aircraft that are 12,005 pound lighter. You're you do an occasional larger jet can come in, they do exceed our weight capacity. So in process of trying to get a determination, can they take off and land safely from an airport? And light, light corporate jets plus helicopters.
And so this, this what we are, I'm trying to bring it back to the original question. This is what process. Is that correct? I guess I'm asking, no, it's not. So this is not that FAA reference that we're making.
No, what I think what you're alluding to is navigation easement that's, that's required as under the code review board stipulations that are presented to us that we approve.
Okay.
All right. These are not, that's not required for the apartments. I have it's usually about four to five typical comments that you're seeing. This one is not off the end of the runway. So I'm not really worried about airspace evaluations like it would be in some of the other produce to the north. The noise, you know, the sound insulation, trying to make sure we get proper sound insulation. And then the, the three attachments, the navigation easement, the traffic, the public disclosure map, and then also the traffic as well as renters. And I'll get into that because there's two different things. A lot of what we're doing, the navigation easement is really for the landowner or the homeowner, somebody who's purchasing the property. So they're being made aware that you are in the vicinity of a public use airport. One of the challenges we face is that for rental units, that lot is not required, is not required to disclose. That's something the city has brought up and we want to explore further to see what we can do to try to get renters as much notice also. Really the, you know, the, the public disclosure map is just to at least some people will take a look. It's in other parts. Usually it's on a plot map, but how many people realistically ever read the plot map? So I faced it here, Mason Falcon Field, Chandler, Scottsdale, and Prescott over my career is that again, people will move in. You know, the disclosure notice is buried in the back of the documentation. And when you get a stack of closing documents like this, it's oftentimes easy to miss. So people will oftentimes be surprised that they're near an airport. I've had many times I've had far more people call me over the years and be surprised that they bought a house next to the airport rather than people actually call me and ask me about the airport. Because I always tell people I'll answer any question about an airport except one, whether you should buy a home in a particular location. I'll answer any questions and if you want, but ultimately it's going to be a personal determination. Some people, you know, they hear any one plane, it, it sounds like they're at Chicago or here are other people who live near airports like that. You know, it's not a problem.
Push for a navigation easement then. And, and most of my questioning is going to pertain to that because there hasn't been anything that's been passed by this board since you came on that hasn't included that in one way or another. And I'm not I'm not real comfortable telling somebody they have to do something on their property that isn't required by law. And the city is making it a demand in their stipulations for development on pretty much any property that we've had our voice on so far. And I see nowhere in this that you're giving the property owner any compensation for taking away their rights because that's basically what a navigation easement does is takes away their rights and it also grants the city full access to the property to discuss any modifications, additions, changes to that property or landscaping in the, in today or in the future. And I'm not sure if our developers are aware of that as well, that, that by signing this navigation easement, you've now given away your rights to your property by the city, to the city to come in and complain or cut down a tree even. I mean, I've seen that in, in, and it's in your language here that you can, so one of the, one of the stipulations on your navigation easement is things that shine or things that will cause a visual hazard to the aviation, the aviators that are using the pattern. Well, I would say a solar panel array that's put in at the right angle could be considered a, a problem for the aviation community if you're within that, that pattern as my fellow commissioner just installed one recently. I have one. I'm worried that this seems very subtle and unproblematic in its intent when it's recommended that the developer sign this in order to move his project forward. But I'm not really happy with the way this becomes a lasting document that's tied to that required by either the FAA or ARS. So that, that's my concern.
Sure. Well, wait, let me say first off is you actually have no legal right to the airspace or of your house. So I mean, this document, you know, whether you, it's put in place over homes. Some people think that, well, I didn't sign an easement, therefore you can't fly over a house. That's not what the document is. This is really the intent of the doc You know, for example, when you, when this board allows more homes to be built north of the airport and people will move in, there's more notice to people that, oh, I'm buying in the flight aircraft noise and overflight, maybe aircraft at a lower level as you get closer to the airport. Aircraft noise and overflight, maybe aircraft at a lower level as you get closer to the airport. Things such as tree heights and building heights. We don't want to put a five-story hotel, for example, off the end of the runway where now you're putting something that is a hazard air navigation because when something happens, what's going to happen? Everybody gets sued. So again, we're trying to protect the airspace. Looking at the heliport because again, if you don't want to have, look at the, the two to three story condos that are going to be next to the hospital in the vicinity of the hospital coming in. Want to again, make sure that those are going through the FAA's airspace evaluation process, that everything is meeting. Somebody's taking off at night and all of a sudden the pilot gets. The solar panels. Concern, but that's why we want to go through the review process. And on certain projects, we actually ask for customers or proposers. Process. So the FAA's lines of businesses can take a look. Project be considered a hazard air navigation. But they will say, if this is a hazard, here's our recommended steps to mitigate it. And if you don't mitigate it, then there might be an impact to the airport. But for this navigation easement, this is really just more to help provide notice to people. Whoever it is, at least we say we have followed, you know, the process that is available to us. We are asking as a city level.
Yeah, if it's, if it's part of that code. That those comments have to be followed. These are requirements for development. And that, that's exactly why I asked to have this discussion was because it is, it's number two on our stipulations and we read it every time is, is. That all those discussions you have with all those departments. Airport, obviously, streets, all that comes back into the recommendation that you're giving that then we. Stipulations that we have now listed in our motion that, that gets sent to council. So that's, you know, once again. Possibly future property owners aware that there's, that you're in the vicinity of an airport. If you can't stand outside your. Then I don't know how much more you can do to help people. That packet, that docket of, of your recording documents, but. Not giving away anything and you're getting something from the property owner to do this. And even FAA recommends that that, that should be compensated. Their property and they're allowing you forevermore to go on to that property. We understand that that's what this document does. I think there's other ways we could go about. They decide to build the property that they have. Disagree with. Saying, but it, it does so much more than that. And that's, that's where I have a problem with it. It, it just goes above and beyond that. It's. Property. And. Have a five-story building on the hospital that's within. Are comfortable with having a height problem in the proximity to their helicopters. It just seems that this opens a door for a lot more further problems and it's asking something that isn't necessarily. Everything that we've, we've approved since I've been on here, very. Story, yet this was a requirement for that developer to sign the.
The commissioner, if you would take a look on the map. This is again, trying to help notify people. Now this, this document is not something that's. It's all over the country. So if you have something that. Anything that you want to draft, we can then run through the city process.
Is because I actually have FAA. The difference is your document doesn't show. To give up this right. So that's the major.
See, if you're expecting us to pay property owner. Done.
No, no, and I get that. And, and I'm not looking to burden the city. Concerned about is, is what we've been talking about since I got in here and, and it's a, a topic of every meeting we have so far, and it was tonight, is trying to make the process as easy as possible for the developer and the. What they plan on doing, but the demands that, that this, as well as your other conditions apply to that property owner to go out and do other due diligence or hire other engineers to come back and give the report that shows their property isn't going to be a problem, just slows down the props process and the project and creates an undue burden on that property owner. There's really no basis for the requirement of other than it would be nice to do that. So I, I just hate seeing this coming up on every single thing we do. And I get the traffic pattern and I get the noise complaints and I understand people not being happy about being next to an airport, but I don't know that this is the way to deal with that concern personally. So.
Thank you.
Again, Commissioner, any, any wisdom you can provide to the airport to help because ultimately I'm the one that gets to deal with complaints. The city goes through the review process, the developer makes their money selling their land, building the homes, the realtors make their money. Close the complaint, I get to handle that. About half of my job is now with noise complaints. So we are trying to again, follow reasonable processes that are used throughout the country. Try to help mitigate noise to the extent possible. And if you could tell me, for example, what on this easement is requiring the developer to spend lots of money?
Wait.
Just, just out of curiosity.
Yeah, it is. It isn't on this document. It was in your stipulations. So I think it's number three.
If you're talking about the airspace evaluation.
Through the code review process, your third, I think it was your third stipulation required them to provide some type of a report.
There is the airspace analysis. If somebody is, it's only for certain ones. For example, this one is not in the flight path of the airport right up into the runway. That was not required. But if somebody is, say, anything that's going into the north of the airport or to the, off the ends of the runway, we are asking people to do. Latitudes and longitude, the height of the building, the height of the ground, and the FAA's online forum will very quickly, it can do this in about two to three minutes, will tell somebody, tell us, is this a potential hazard that requires additional work? Or is it no hazard? So we're not asking them to spend thousands upon thousands of dollars to go do reports. Again, this, again, and it's part of my job and I, when I do request it, saying I'm there to help the developers go through the online process. And it's a very straightforward process. It just says, is there something that might be an impact to the airport's approach and takeoff surfaces? So again, we're not asking them to do lots of things, but you mentioned a five-story building. If somebody wanted to build a five-story building a mile off the end of the runway, we would definitely have to go through that process to make sure that we are not allowing something that could be a potential hazard, whether it's daytime operations or nighttime operations.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair.
Oh, thank you very much. I appreciate your comments.
I think that that was a really good, that last answer was a really good and important answer about like the level of process that we're expecting from applicants. I also think that this is a really good document for us to have in front of us. I realize that any modifications to this will have to be drafted and would also go through city staff because that's a coordinate issue. That's not just something on your plate. I really appreciate this. Are there any new and unique questions that the commissioner have for the, that the commissioners have for the airport manager?
Not at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner Pelz. Commissioner Kling? We have lost her. Okay. Commissioner Glasscock?
No.
Commissioner Stevens? All right. I do not have any further questions. We really appreciate you coming out here. I know it's very easy to get contentious and also you get a lot of complaints, so it probably feels a little bit attacky.
Oh, no. I'm used to, that's why we're trying to do these documents, try to help reduce. And this, these documents have actually gone through the city process. So part of my job, I've been here seven months, it's taking the documentation that was developed and making sure that it is being brought forth in the code review process. So it's not getting overlooked. So again, you know, I recognize that it's the airport, all we can do is make recommendations. We don't do building codes and zoning codes. We deal with what is already in place. Again, this is just trying to help get the information out that one is required already by state law. We're doing some additional things to try to help give at least adequate notice to prospective residents.
Well, and that's very appreciated and thank you very much. I believe that we are good. All right. I believe that is it for the discussion items. Is there anything else that any of the commissioners would like to address during this meeting? Yes, Vice Chair?
And it's not a topic for future meetings. It's maybe a, a request for an expanded opening. At the very beginning of the meeting, you give an update or a information report and update. We. Year, we've approved a ton of housing. And yet I haven't seen a single shovel turn on. The one that is building right now was approved before I got on here. And one of our discussions, every time we. Seeing that's going down at the end of the street, we talk about our need for housing. And we, in our back of our mind, think that we have a whole lot. But then it seems like once it's approved, they disappear into the ether and it would be nice to know whether. Still on track, they're still happening, or the owners have ceased to, to communicate with you and have moved. For housing units when it, when it comes to looking at another development to go in. Does that make sense?
We can bring an update at the next meeting on a lot of those projects.
Not looking to add. Have kind of an understanding of what's happening with those things that we actually approved.
Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, we can bring that definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think that's a really good addition. All right. And with that.
Before you adjourn, Madam Chair, just a couple of things I want to bring up. Meeting with the Historic Preservation Commission on August 17th. I have not heard back from everybody on this commission. If you could please check that email. Want to make sure as many commissioners from both bodies can attend that for the discussion. And also as far as the August and September meetings go, we might look to change those, push the August. Nation of both months for a special meeting. We'll have to see what that looks like. Take some adjustments for August and September.
All right. Thank you very much. Meeting adjourned.